Good morning. Today is September 11th, 2017. And I called upon the county commissioners for order. Before we had the prayer, I just wanted to remind everybody about 16 years ago today. Just think back to where you were that fateful morning in New York. Some of you, were you born here?
Yes.
Most of you were before, yes. And the day that changed our lives, I think, forever. Especially the way we do air travel now, so. Just think of them this morning as Mike Martin from South Georgia comes to pray for us. And think of we have a couple of employees that need our special attention today too. Hope it's okay to say this, but Kay Holland needs our prayers and also Leanne Jennings needs our prayers today, so. Mike, if you want to come forward, please stand your next time.
Heavenly Father, we are reminded of this day, this September the 11th. And we are reminded how vulnerable we are and how desperately we need your protection. Father, we think of those that live on the Gulf Coast today, those that live in Florida, those that live in areas that are ravaged by fires and earthquakes. And we are grateful, Father, for the way that your hand has indeed been protection to our part of the country. Father, we think of these two staff members that Judge Tanner has commented on. We pray that you would meet their needs in a very special way today. And for these that give leadership to our county and our community. Father, we pray for wisdom and guidance. We pray, Lord, that you would lean and guide and you would be glorified on this day. We give you thanks and praise at the name of Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. I am Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state under God, one justice.
Hopefully, we started this morning, the service dog, we're going to take a look at him. So everybody's happy with us. I forgot his name. What's his name?
Tweet.
Tweet.
You'll have to pick up on it.
Yeah.
Close the door.
Right?
This is our newest employee that we donated to a couple weeks ago and we just wanted to go through some stuff.
You got a hit.
Started with you. Too good looking dog.
This is Tweet.
Tweet.
He just doesn't look like Tweet.
That's it. Oh, it's like a Samson.
How many dogs have we had so far?
Let's see. So service dogs, we had Paris, and Nico. And then this dog here.
They are amazing. They are amazing. So we had a package once that had sent a building that was suspicious. So they had to bring a dog in. And that dog has the capacity to smell over 1,600 different scents. Everyone was amazed. Oh, that was good.
It's feeling good. We've got a couple drug love. I'm worried that we already ran because everyone's getting on. We're done with dog good. We've got some stuff already in the last week that we worked on, so. It's been doing very well.
Have you thought about that process?
I don't know.
So that can never mention that.
Thank you for letting that for sure and for sure and for your work.
Thank you. I feel great.
C'est pas. Now we can start with the number one, the minutes recognized minutes of August 4th, 2017. County Commissioner's Court meeting. And from that, there is notice of recognition. For two, the budget amendments to authorize the county auditor to prepare a budget amendment effective 9/30/17 to make any necessary transfers for year end, transfers will be made within the course, if possible. Otherwise contingency plans have been prepared. This is just to cover expenses coming in after around 30 minutes we have to have made. From out on the edge, one of the Chinese, that's one month, we may have to get out of the van. No, it's just we need to open that. If we do, we have a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the county auditor preparate budget amendment effective 9/30/17 to make necessary transfers for year end.
Will those be shared in this?
I have a motion in a second, all in favor, Mr. Trump. Five to zero. Thank you. Bouchers to consider and act upon approval of the payment voucher process by county auditor's office effective August 3rd, 2017 to secure 6/2017. Check numbers, 176594, 3176790. And wire transfers 949, 3956 in a amount of $2,477,933.6. I have a motion.
We approve the vouchers as presented.
Second here discussion. I have a quick question. Pat, I think this can be for you. Page 23 of 34. Looks like a line item for WPSG as the vendor, bariatric patient carriers. So not necessarily the expense. I'm assuming this is to go on the fire truck. Why is he checking? I'm sorry. To go on the fire truck. Is there one going on every truck or how do you decide?
Yeah, there's one going on every engine, every rescue truck. They're reusable, they're cleanable. And we have some patients in the county that are, we have one that's over 700 pounds, so. That's how we move large patients like that. It's like a big tarp with panels on it. So there's one on every engine and every rescue.
Okay. Again, car washes for the constables, we've got to figure something else out. This should be like $40, $40 a month on car washes and I think there's a better way to do this.
Didn't they talk about a monthly fee that they use quick fact? I mean, said it would be a monthly fee, it would be cheaper. If they could get that done, that'd be fine by me, but it looks like it's spending $20 a month. On page 21.
What do other departments do? Getting their own cars washed?
Well, the sheriff, they all have that.
They have the free hour, of course.
Yes, free out there.
We have inmates that do it and if they're busy, the guys are going to wash their own car.
I think they spoke about that usage, but it was taking this amount of time throughout the days. I don't know if that's a concern or an issue. It seems to be with them.
The car wash is open 24/7, so we can go out there and wash it anytime. All the equipment is there. And that's what most of our guys do is wash their own. They were concerned about having the inmates washing their cars, but we always have somebody out there.
Pat, you can lock those cars too.
I don't know my name in this discussion.
Yeah, I think we, I think let's look into that and see if we can, if they come up with an agreement required or see if they can go out there. I know it's Kyle Weis out there too.
Cars is a, I'm moving right now.
So anyway, that's just all that's missing. And on page 18, I'm just curious about this. Bapers, effort taxi, $270 for hotel stickers. County Commissioners, is that, is that four?
I don't quite know what those are. Yes, those are some county commissioner seals that we used in community outreach. So at vendor events, community outreach, you know, little kids would come up and say, kind of be a commissioner for a day. Like the little seal that the sheriff's office uses. And so we did run that by Scott and Carrie. And that is not specific to any one commissioner. It does not say precinct one or four. It's not specific at all to precincts.
I have, I just use my, just to add them when I'm actually going to bring them back.
Where will they be? Some people can't.
We can leave them by the box where our inbox is. And so if anyone is at a community event, I think we ordered 500. I can't, it's a significant amount that we can only use.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I have a motion in a second. All in favor of the vouchers, raise your hand. I make a motion, though, in favor. I'm just, I just dropped the ball here. Number four, insurance report. Do you recognize the insurance file report? Is there any, they know this Judy, so some recognize on that. Judy, you're going to come up anyway, aren't you?
I am.
Okay. Number five, prescriptive time to hear a report or prescriptive time to take any action necessary. Looks like he's doing pretty good.
He is. He has asked for a weekly report on balances. And the last one was on May 22nd. That was one employee with one, from one department. This time there are no employees over 100 hours.
Excellent. Thank you. That's our view of some constellations, sure. Okay. Thanks Judy. Appreciate that. Okay, number six, 2017, 2018, Emerald Power and Star, the events venue district. Project to consider and act upon approval of the Emerald Power Events Venue District for the fiscal year 2017, 2018. Budgets funded through 5% of collateral tax and 2% of tuition tax. District operates and manages over a quid of the town, continues to be sitting on. Show how you do. I agree. And the handouts quite late, did everybody get it? Yes. Okay, that's the second page, right there. And I do want to introduce Karen Rogers here. He's the president of the Emerald Power Events Venue District. Karen, I want to stand up for the procedure.
I'll turn to the second page of the handout. I notice a lot of numbers on this page. And the third column actually has the budget request for 2017, 18. And want to review the beginning balance. Beginning available balance, $1,000 that are in reserve that have not been spent. We anticipate that number is $4,290,973. And we have kept track of that number. We split those dollars up basically 60, 40, based on the original project. The original project, 60% of the dollars of the bond issue went to the ANC Center and 40% went to the improvements at the Civic Center. So we have a trap. We need excess to see share and split those dollars accordingly. So that the district has a policy to keep $500,000 of reserve. And the ANC portion of that number is $1,830,000. And the city's portion is $1,960,000. The reason the city portion is higher is they just spent less dollars on capital throughout the years. If you look at your revenue, you have total revenue of $30,063,212. That's made up of your vehicle rental tax of 5%. And those are short-term rentals to put in the city. $955,000, your hotel occupancy tax, and that's a 2% tax. $1,946,000. And just to point out, we are seeing hotel tax trending flat to last year. We budgeted for a 4% increase and it's coming in flat to what we received last year. A little bit of past due, $150 on tax, interest on past due taxes. And then interest income of $6,750. Your missed money is readily reimbursed, $77,000. Is associated with the cost fund for the Ad One event. So that's the event that just took place. That's the amount that we will get back from the state. And that amount, when I show you your expenses, it's actually going to be budgeted and paid to ATOJ. For a total revenue of $30,060,000. If you look at your total expenses of $2,963,475. When you go through those, your small amount of office and hostess dollars. Professional services, $18,000. $10,000 of that is associated with the economic impact study for the Ad One event. We need to do that study to participate in the event right now. Audit fee is $6,800. Emerald Tri-State participation, $675,000. Those are improvements to the facility. So if you look, later on I have details, but I can run some of those real quick. The improvements have budgeted for next year, total $438,000 that they have actually approved and identified. That's farming lot asphalt improvements, a wash rack, cattle pen improvements. Improvements to the HVAC system and the purchase of a truck. They've also budgeted another $237,000, which we look to bring to do additional improvements at the facility if needed. The ANC management contract, $28,000. That is paying for the operating costs associated with the ANC Center and facilities out there.
Who manages that mission?
Tri-State.
So is that an additional employee or is that looped back to Tri-State?
It all, it all goes back to Tri-State and it's supposed to cover the operating costs associated with the facility. So it could be employees, it could be, but basically it's only those that are, it's only the operating costs associated with that. And then $60,000 for property insurance. That number's a little high. It's actually coming in right at $32,000. But I got that number right as the, can you just post a proofing this budget last week? And then event development, $356,517. And if you flip over to the last page of your handout, there's a listing of all of the events included in that cell count. And most of those events are recurring events each year. And you can see they have $65,000 there for their, even that list, other events, which allows them to have some budget dollars in case they have an opportunity bringing something new. Going back to the summary sheet, the civic center, what we call civic center management contract, $198,000. And that's the same thing. Those are operating costs associated with the new district portion of the building. And already reviewed event development, fiscal agent fee, $3,400. And that does come to the city and that's just the admin fee for keeping the books for the new district. And then civic center improvement, $250,000. That's a wall track system that we're going to do in the heritage room. And your debt service, $867,000. So you see that's a decrease from what we had prior to here. That's because of the bond refunding we did last year. And just to recap, you have two bond issues, the 2009 issue, the annual debt service is $602,000. The maturity of that bond issue is 2028. The 2016 bond issue, which was a refunding done last year, is $265,000 annual debt service. And that bond matures in 2025. For a total expenses of $2,963, leaving an available fund of $4,343,180. So that we're actually anticipating we're going to grow reserves during the next fiscal year.
A quick follow-up question on the new management, the civic center management line item, the breakdown on that last page of all of the events. And it has a listing of all of that in that for marketing to bring the event in or is that staff to set it up? What is, what supports those line items?
Okay, so the civic center management contract is $198,000.
And then the event development?
And then the event development, $356,517. Those are events at the ANC Center. And some of those are reimbursements to Tri-State for costs, but many of those were paying, were sharing the cost. Were helping to facilitate those events. So, and I can give you an example on the $50,000 for AQHA for the Ad One event. That is to help off separate costs to AQHA. So if you look at the invoice that AQHA gets for all of their share of the costs, the rental fees, there'll be a deduction of $50,000. I mean, not that. So it helps on the rental side. Okay.
So thank you. Any questions?
We approve the budget of the Emerald Power Events Venue District for 2017, 2018.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Number seven, juvenile probation department to consider and act upon the installation of security doors between the fifth floor offices of the juvenile probation office in Santa Fe. Troy, this was approved in your budget and Mike, I want you to talk to this too. I'll let you go ahead for some of this.
That's okay. Thank you, Senator, for these issues. What I'm requesting is the approval to remove four of the historical doors that are entry points into our main office areas. We've had some security issues that I've noticed since I've been chief where some parents and families have gotten back into the office areas and surprised officers because they didn't know they were coming back there. And so the doors are, they're older and so with the traffic that goes through, sometimes they unlock, sometimes they get unlocked, sometimes they don't close all the way. And so then the families can come back. We have one incident in particular where an upset mother come from an officer in her office. Thankfully, she didn't escalate to a physical altercation or anything. But I do see the potential that that could happen and so I would like to install some security doors to protect the officers.
The doors in this 1930 building, they're a little different than the courthouse project. Courthouse project, you have perpetuity decou, you sign a perpetuity decoding with the state of Texas. The Santa Fe building, you do have a little more lightweight to do so. And basically what I'll do is remove the escort doors for the storage. And we'll put on what's referred to as slab doors, solid core wooden doors. That way that would give them the capability to put down the door locking. We cannot modify the doors or the jams.
So in the event that something happens in Troy is no longer housed there, you can take those doors down and put them in storage in your back.
Yep, a cost. No, we'll work on that right now. The basis to get the cost of the doors and on the locks.
Could it be helpful, just so that we're in the loop? I know you've mentioned that will come out in your budget too. It would be helpful.
It'll probably take me yawns about it first here, I guess, unless I'm right now. We'll get it within this budget here, which we have done.
How will that affect, if any at all, the security checkpoint at the bottom level of the Santa Fe building?
No, no. They would still go through those security checkpoints. All this would allow us to do is when, they would have to go to a central point to check in as with the secretary. And then the officer would be notified and they would come up and get their family and then escort them back and escort them out. So they would know if that went to the first floor.
And so are you envisioning the secretary to sit outside the door or a push button? How would someone?
No, they're actually going to be able to have access to our waiting room. We have an actual waiting room and we have windows that separate the secretary from there. And so she will be able to tell us from that point. And then the officers will come up, she'll call.
Okay, I'm sorry. We just got this this morning.
It's always been that way though. It's always, you're behind the glass.
That's correct.
And then people come up, buzz in whatever.
To make a change on your print that you have or that door that shows waiting room file one, E3. Actually, it's supposed to be open office door in file two, so I need to stop.
I have a motion.
I move that to approve the installation of security doors in the fifth floor office to approve operation.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero. Thank you very much. Number eight, online legal subscriptions to consider and act upon renewing the contract to provide online legal research services for the public for Lexis, Lexis. What do you say?
Lexis.
With subscriptions paid from basically like the core costs. Karen.
As you know, we are buying online legal research software over the health, power, and this country in Lexis-Nexus subscription. However, I did get a call from a representative of Westlaw and I have extended or expanded their double package to include some of the things that Lexis, Lexis-Nexus have before. And if you all were to choose to go with just the upgraded Westlaw package, it would save us about $18,000 a year. I had asked Ted just this morning to see if we were going to upgrade again. I'm not putting words in his mouth, but I believe he thinks like the Westlaw package has that good content, ready to be needed. Is that true?
That would be worth it.
And then Karen, can you give us a rundown on how many times people went to Lexis-Nexus as opposed to Westlaw?
Yes, I believe it was at 58 or Lexis. 58 times on Lexis and 38 on Westlaw.
So Westlaw was the chosen anyway. And then now they've got even an upgraded version of everything. So I, I say we go to Westlaw and say with $18,000.
Now, this is at the public library and this is the software that anyone in the community will use and do their legal research anywhere.
Right.
I remember something about Lexis-Nexus having some forms that were made different. And so as a part of the upgrade, are the forms included in that? That's what we thought people were downloading.
I was just asking Ted this morning. And Westlaw does offer forms that all like navigation does not.
Well, it's a feature included on this summary statement. I had not looked at the forms, but this is one of the big players in the market. I don't think that you market this.
Yeah, I just want to make sure there's no hidden expenses like a per-click transaction cost. There's a, you know, any of those small things because again, they are a big player in the market, so. Yeah, they charge a per-click fee when you download, if you're downloading. So I just, the cost recovery that we will be getting, I want to make sure we're not upsetting that with a different type of expense.
And the way they were explaining the new all-inclusive government plan with Westlaw is there are no outside of subscription charges.
Okay. Okay.
But what we see is what we see.
And Scott, you think this is beneficial for you, for your people?
Yeah, we, I think everyone in my office prefers Westlaw.
They prefer, and you, Randall? Hello? You prefer Westlaw over Lexis or no?
I've got, I've got the old school folks that are Westlaw and the new law students that are Lexis. There's a clear distinction between that.
So Karen, we could, we could cancel this today and then come back to court with the Westlaw contract next time.
So, and a question, Randall. What is the, I guess, added feature that the younger lawyers are more attracted to than the Westlaw?
When the, when the, when the Westlaw folks went through, Westlaw was all the woods. When I went to law school, it was Westlaw or nothing. So that's, eventually Lexis jumped into it. Historically, Lexis was a lot cheaper, so that's what the law schools offered their students. So they got used to it. Just like we got used to Westlaw because it was all there was when you went to law school. But now there's probably more competition between the two. But I know there was a substantial period where most law schools primarily offered Lexis as the available online research tool. And so students, that is what they knew. And so that's what they prefer when they get out, used to it.
So is it a big deal to climb as far as getting allocated into the Westlaw from the news that's coming out? I mean, they pretty much have been used to it.
I'm an old dog. I learned to use Lexis pretty easily. It goes both ways. Their legal, online legal research is basically online legal research. And as it's developing, it's becoming more, more user-friendly, more natural. There's greater capability search using natural language instead of complicated formula. We used to have the use, which we call Boolean. But now it's, I think, I certainly, speaking for our guys, we have young lawyers certainly and they haven't roused at all that have used Westlaw.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion to cancel this or just cancel, just hold it off until next week, up to this?
Is it a renewal?
Yeah.
I, I can tell you that we're looking at our, our stuff and there's a lot of stuff that we're getting still in books because the contracts are multi-year contracts. And we're really looking at knocking that out, having access to electronic.
I thought we I thought we had.
We're in the process of doing that right now.
Okay. Okay. So how much time do you need to do that?
We have to do it by next week, which will wait before October.
Okay, so what do we?
And keep in mind, this contract is just for the public. It's not for.
Right, exactly. Okay.
When is the renewal of that?
I think, I think there's something.
Next year.
Next year?
First will expire next year. Next is next.
Okay.
Westlaw, yes, it's a term contract, Lexis, yes, it's a two-year contract.
Okay. So this is primarily, this is just, this is just for the public?
Yes, this is just for the public.
Yeah, this, this is for October first through September 30th next year. So.
I'd like to make a motion that we not approve the renewal of the contract for online legal services for the public through LexisNexis and move to the all-inclusive Westlaw package.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero, thank you very much.
Gary, do we have a contact there at the public library? I just would like to make sure that when we make this change, that the public has what they need to research, that we don't have an unintended consequence for assuming something's in that, and we're not sure.
I tried to touch base with the manager over there. Pretty regularly, we can make sure everything's.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Right, number nine, Texas Department of Family Protective Services, title for illegal services contract. Consider act upon the approval of the contract between Potter County and TVFPS and authorize Judge Tanner to sign a contract. This is something that we do every year. This is through, this is through your office, right? Yeah, for the CPS attorney.
Right.
Okay. Are there any changes in here?
Not that I'm, not that I'm. Would we approve these contracts between Potter County, Texas Department of Protective Services, authorize Judge Tanner to sign a contract?
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero, thank you very much.
Number ten, Potter Randall with Presley District. You say what I call the problem. A, submitting a nominee or nominees for board members in Potter County Presley for two-year period, or B, allow board members for Potter County to remain on board for additional two-year term. And you see, in fact, if all, everybody who's on the Potter County Board has agreed to remain for two more years, so that's a good thing, unless y'all have some mayors in.
The only suggestion I might make is that we never get a look back to this board. I have no idea what they decide on, what they approve, what, so we don't, even if it's just once a year, once every six months.
Well, our, our lead is Sharon, she's on the board, so I'm assuming that she's not there today, but I'm assuming maybe she could report to us what happens. Would that be something that can, that can happen?
I'll mention it too.
Okay, so what else would be?
I move that we allow the current board members of Potter County to remain on the Randall Presley District for additional two years.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero, what will happen is that once I send this to the Presley District, they will send us a, a list of nominees or to vote on a ballot. It will give me all the exact same, okay? Number eleven, local government, so I should hear again the local government.
Brandon, I may need you to get the turn that TV up, and I changed your screen, Judge Tanner, but this should not be net new, this has been in the media, but I'll give you just a quick update. The LGC met September sixth, and a couple of high-level items, the parking garage is slated to, to really open, and actually I think is already open late Friday. There was a little bit of a delay of getting the infrastructure and the cards set up, but those are scheduled to be delivered to Judge Tanner, so I know you'll get communication out of how many judges we have going into the.
One hundred and forty-eight.
We, and so we have a hundred and fifty spots, so we have one forty-eight going on.
I'm very happy about that. Very surprised about that. And so we have a hundred and forty-eight people. They're going to come see Shannon today and pick up their permits and their parking, their little green parking area. If you didn't know that, they're going to pick up their, I think they're going to put on their, their.
The placard.
Placard and have their permit, and supposedly, Shannon's going to have a walk through with Jerry today to see how it works, and so if you have any questions, Shannon will be glad to help you with that. I can't see the.
What was that?
Were criminals to all the department of the legal commission?
Yeah. They, they all came up and did the right thing, and so we'll see. First call to bill, we'll see how, how well they go, and they walk an extra thought to get to office, so, anyway, I'm very happy with that.
All right. So the parking garage, just want to give a quick update, the convention center hotel, and you probably saw this in the media, is open for business. They are taking reservations. They had a temporary certification of occupancy, so this is not the, the full certification. They're still working on the banquet facilities, and we don't have an ETA, and that will be open. So I wanted to report that back to the group.
I said they got some conventions going on.
Yes, I think there's some conventions slated, yes. There was also a presentation with, which is what you see on your screen. There were, I think, about fourteen designs that were presented to the public. A survey went out. This was number one. It was actually number one amongst the LGC even before the survey went out. So there was consensus on this conceptual design to start to get this out, to really look at value engineering. Mike will be proud of all the terms that we're learning through this process, but the value engineering, but this is conceptually the design. It, it, they're tying it interesting, I think, for Potter County, it should have a very similar look and feel for the Santa Fe building, of what people saw when they saw this quickly, because this reminds me of the Santa Fe building. So I wanted to just give this group a visual, but again, there's been a lot of media around this, so I, I don't think this is new information. There is an RFP that has been issued and has been out in the public for who is going to build this, and I think that's slated to close this Friday. That is a subcommittee that I sit on with the city, and that will be Jerry and the city manager and John Lutz, and he is a voting member of the LGC that has joined that committee, and they're expecting seventy-two hundred seats in this facility. And I asked if this was, those were permanent or temporary. They told me those were permanent seats. So more to come on that, but that RFP process has started, will close, and then start looking at who will build. There is not an update on the signature of the letter of intent. I think that's what has gotten a lot of questions of, is it signed, is it done? And I think there's some open questions on that and the timing, but not anything that anybody's given red flags on, so proceeding forward. And then there were three subcommittees that were established at the LGC meeting, but they're calling it Parking Revenue Enhancement Committee, and so this is other events that could happen there. I think once the structure went up, if you've been up there or as you go up there, that top floor in particular is prime property for an event, an outdoor something. It's really quite a beautiful view of the city. So had a look at other ways to use that property. The pro forma was built on parking fees, and people actually parking in the structure. So it was an opportunity, once it went up and a good lay of the land and the other buildings started to come up, what are other things that that building could be used for? There is an MPEV Community Engagement and Outreach Advisory Committee. I have to be hard to say all that correctly. So this is a committee that John Lutz is leading about individuals in the community that can be a part of it. So as you think of people that want to be a part of it, this is a great committee for us to put their name in. Please let me know, or let John know directly. This is a committee in particular that I've been watching to make sure that we have a good holistic view of everybody in the city and how to, how to be a part of that from a community perspective. And there was a committee, the MPEV Facility Advisory Committee, and that was an initial committee to get it started, and it'd go after really the team, and that has now been removed, is that Facility Advisory Committee, that there's not a need for anyone to be involved with the RFP. We meet on October eighteenth, that's the next meeting at eleven-thirty at the same.
Okay. Thank you. Number twelve, Strategic Planning Services. To provide an update on the interlocal agreement between Potter County and Pennant Regional Plating Services for Strategic Planning Services. You going to speak to this or Kyle? Hello, Kyle?
Let me.
Yeah, I just, as a matter of practice, I hope everyone, it'll just, as we like to put, just in the agenda, I hope to keep everybody informed that this is moving along, just a quick update on where we are.
Thank you very much. This process has been walking pretty good. We've had three background meetings. One of those occurred before I came before you last. As you recall, we broke out about eight different areas that broadly we wanted to look at. Those included facilities, staffing, sheriff's department, legal and judicial, fiscal, welding of the county, roads and transportation, communication, and then a deeper look into a couple of things in the operation between departments. We've gotten through about thirty of those items through these three sessions. The most recent one, we looked at legal and judicial and fiscal, so that was a lot of fun. We had the accountants and attorneys all over at the same time, the commissioners, and it was.
It does.
And it was, it was really, really a good meeting. It was very clear, very open discussion, very pleasant discussion. People had showed great respect for each other, even though on some of the topics, people may not have known exactly what was going on across the line, so even though we haven't gotten to the full strategic planning sessions, it's been pretty useful, and the dialogue's been opening up here and things on the agenda that I heard in the strategic planning sessions, which tells me that communication's been running along. I anticipate that we will have another meeting in September. That will probably be, oh, the third or fourth week of September, we'll come together, probably look at road and transportation and communication, and then we'll also have a meeting probably in October, where we'll need to get into some of the fire issues and then wrap up any of the loose ends that are sitting out there on staffing and fiscal. Once we have a definition of these areas, once they were looking at absolutely different things, that'll be put into a document, and that document then will go out to that small working group, small working group will ensure that that document reads the way that everybody remembers it occurring, and then we'll come forward with this body, let you take a look at it and say, these are the fifty issues we're looking at, the challenges, this is what has come about, and then from there, move into a larger strategic planning session, probably fifteen different individuals. That will probably be a two-day session somewhere, I'm guessing in December or January, and based on that, those meetings, we'll put together the strategic plan. So it's really been a very good process, it's been very pleasant, everybody's really working pretty well, I guess, I've learned a lot about the county, and hopefully it's being useful to those that are involved.
Generally, it's a bit.
How many, how many times you say?
We got three of the formal meetings in, we've got a few more to go in the next month, and then we'll have the background information too.
We'll get some back.
The original body was assigned by the judge, and that's the small working group. Based on the working group, we're touching base with the commissioners that are involved and asking who we need, so when we did law enforcement, we ended up with, was it the deputy that came?
Who, the chief came.
And, and that's right. So we ended up with the two there. We're looking at the financial, obviously, the treasurer came, wherever we were looking at the legal, we end up with a couple of attorneys and some of the judges.
So are you on this one?
I know, I've never been.
We have two members of the board, yeah.
Well, even so, you know, if this is really a strategic plan, you better involve.
Well, we could, we could get everybody at the same time about. I would, I would, we could do that in the future, but.
I mean, because it's not going to come, it's going to come to us as some sort of finished product that we've ever seen.
I think we could either do that, or we can also interchange as far as the commissioners on that in that session. I'd be more happy to.
But you've been to every meeting.
Yes.
So it would be like someone did come in, not knowing what the heck's going on, so I think that, I think that the, the committee that I established to begin with is appropriate for now, and then, when you bring the final product, the final product here, and we'll go from there, and if you don't like it, we'll go back and.
And there's actually, there's actually a big step between the working group and the final product, what you'll end up with is a, a listing of these are the items that the working group has looked at. Everybody on this body will have the opportunity to look through that before we go into the strategic planning session, so there will be another way.
I used to want to get ambushed.
Yeah.
And it's, it's happened quite a bit lately.
Like I say, if we need to switch something up, I'm open to do it.
So the step in the middle, Kyle, just so we know what to prep for after the next two sessions, you mentioned a two-day session, or you help us understand that a little bit more, because that makes it a forum that you're looking for, Commissioner? I think the best takeaway is that you will not be presented with a fifty-page document saying, okay, please vote, that's not the approach.
Right, so, so what we've done thus far is do the background on these topics that we know what the issue's facing the county, and that background, try to form a sound there, because if you ask, what's going on with the road bridge department, that may mean something different to each one of the commissioners up here, that may mean something to each person that works in the road bridge department, that may mean something completely different in purchasing finance. So what we're trying to do is lay down a definition of these different issues that we're looking at. What we're going to provide to the body is a listing of those definitions that this small working group has come up with, also associated with that or any of the items that we think are going to be a challenge. So as you go through, if you're looking at the road bridge department, the aging infrastructure, obviously one of the challenges, that's going to show up there. This body will have as much time as you see fit and running, appropriate, to go through and review that and identify, hey, okay, did the working group miss this point that we need to include in that? Once that's done, we'll come together in the strategic planning sessions, and that can be whatever group the county determines is appropriate, that can be largely staff, that can be the whole voting membership in a, in an open meeting, that can be however you want to do it. Once those people come together, the working group with about twelve or fifteen, that's rights, we'll then put a priority ranking of each of those fifty topics out there. Everybody's sitting in that room, will have the opportunity to rank those topics, and then based on those rankings, we'll try to get to the top ten or fifteen items that are facing the county, and spend a lot of time to work through those specific issues. We're not going to be able to spend a day on each of the fifty issues, but we do want to get to those top ten or fifteen items and spend a lot of time.
Good. Kyle, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number thirteen, tax increment for investment zones, tiers two, provide a payment tax for investment zones, two east gateway.
This will be a quick update, Judge. We had our second meeting, still housekeeping and organizing. One of the items that the board has been charged with is now taking our big goals and starting to funnel them into priorities. So you will expect an agenda item for probably the city to come back to all of the governing bodies, so Potter County being one of those, and that's, and I would expect a by-law change about the additional seat. So just a quick note to be thinking of who we might want in that additional seat once that comes to this, this body. So just that we met, and we're still kind of organizing to private peace.
Okay, thank you. Number fourteen, vehicle purchase to consider, act upon purchasing a vehicle from Texas Dodge, estimated amount of twenty-four thousand and a hundred dollars to utilize that county during federal forfeiture, front will be used on this. I think we, this was a budget memo, lifetime, but we just need to put this on, keep the kitchen, so we make sure it was shown correctly.
Correct. Yes, we are at a time, we have not located, this is a used vehicle, and this will need specification, so.
Okay.
We should be able to get that purchased and have a lease it, and then another one in. I think Professor Murphy asked about that last time.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions?
I move that the present field of Texas Dodge, invasion around about eight hundred, these five, I'm counting three, I will call you upon this.
Motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, number fifteen, meeting schedule, to adopt a schedule for these all pressures for meetings throughout, I would reduce them to a two-year. This is from legislative body to us, I'm sure they're laughing. We now have, Scott, you may want to, again, speak to this, we now have to have a meeting to approve salaries.
Yeah, this is really the result of a, a general, maybe, one sixty, Robert, General Paxton.
Yeah, this is really the result of a general opinion, eighty-one sixty, wrote, General Paxton bestowed on us. The tenor of that, of that opinion is that because the commissioners' court is responsible for approving all claims and expenditures of county funds, that those of that approval has to take place before the expenditure does. And so the specific question asked was, can commissioners approve in advance the payment of payroll or regularly recurring expenses, credit card payments, that kind of thing? And the attorney general's answer was no. You have to approve it in advance every time. And since then, the Treasurers Association asked their lawyer about it, and he go behind, no, the attorney general's absolutely right. I'm not entirely sure. I agree completely with the attorney general, but the safest course in terms of how statutes read is to go ahead and approve payroll before it goes out. And at that time too, we can, after speaking with the auditor and treasurer, we believe we can work our schedules such that we're not missing a payment because we haven't had an opportunity to have you guys review and approve. Several of these meetings, if it would be possible, if it's scheduled for you, to simply recess and then call meeting back the next day to approve the payroll. Other than that, it'll have to be a special meeting for that purpose of approving voucher for water transfers, billing payroll, and credit card banks, regular form.
So Scott, none of this has hit the county commissioners and judges' lists or have surprised. And I'm surprised that none of this came up during our, we had a, an update this past Thursday, our continuing added training on different, I'm surprised no one brought any of this up.
I think the reason it became a hot-button issue is that the Auditors Association lawyer strongly suggested to the auditors that they face potential liability if they paid out payroll before the commissioners' board approved. And so my understanding, and I say this without the intent, my understanding is the treasurer's around the state end. And so it has become an issue of some importance. I know I've seen it in ours this year, there are lawyers around the state or asking, what's your county, what's your category? Because I think it caught at least two hundred and fifty-three counties in the state flat footed.
And this is an AG opinion that was a response?
Yes, it was a response to a question of Walker County, responsible. Statutes have been in their present form for a long time. And if you read them literally, it's, it's not entirely clear that pre-conditioned, you have to have a court review. In fact, there's an AG opinion that suggests the auditor, or the, I'm sorry, treasurer is not liable for making a payment if the commissioners' court comes back later and ratifies or approves it. So, but again, I'm not entirely sure. I agree with the AG, but this is the safest course, and it would certainly protect our auditor, our treasurer, in making payroll. If somebody decided to challenge it, I don't know, but of course that.
So what's the AG opinion?
KP one six zero.
By the way, our auditor, I mean treasurer, wanted to be here to protest, but she's in a school right now, so she was breaking out.
Oh, yes. I put out with her, she was juiced breaking out.
Yeah, she was breaking out, so.
Verify that.
So.
It could be, although the background that the AG used in his reasoning to get to his ultimate conclusion is fairly well established. The idea that only commissioners' court has authority ultimately to approve expenditures of county funds, that's not a common rule of justice. It's the law, it is the law. The idea that claims have to be presented to the commissioners' court, that's always been the law. What seems to be filled in in the interstices is this idea that all payments have to come pre, before the expenditures made, which would include there. That's, that's where this, this, other AG opinions might have been ready to suggest that this AG opinion explicitly said.
So for example, October ninth is a very good schedule. Payroll goes out the eleventh, right, party's complete. So we have to have a meeting on the tenth to approve it. Okay, we had, can we do it in commissioners' court?
We will have the numbers for you to approve until the eleventh.
So.
Okay, just for the record, we only need three people here. We will not ever have to have a full court. If we have a full court, that's fine, but we only need three, it's kind of like when we canvas codes. Three people, two-minute meeting or less. You guys are going to be gone.
On the left.
On the eleventh. Are you all, are you here, right here?
Is it one?
Will you be awake by nine?
I have this.
Okay. So we just have to post for it? I mean, all this people behind, I can't, I can't recess the meeting and reiterate.
No, that only works if you're, it'll do it for four hours.
So we have, Shannon's going to have to post this.
It's amazing how often we post this.
Isn't it amazing? It's just amazing. So are you envisioning a nine a.m. meeting? Yeah, is that okay? Is that all right with y'all? When is nine o'clock okay?
That's entirely for y'all.
Do an eight, I mean.
That's fine.
Okay. At the same on the twenty-seventh or October, is that the other date that's penciled in, Carrie, if you missed it earmarked?
Of course, everything that I have, I think I have the original here on the map of this, but everything in green is when we have to have a meeting. Right, on the circles there. And so.
I will put together.
Okay. Okay.
And we see this as a continuation? I mean, it's not just a.
Yeah, I would suggest that perhaps all of our constituent associations, perhaps look for changes in the law in the next legislative session. It is pretty ridiculous that you have to come together to approve a regular recurring expense that everyone understands is going to have, it's a pro forma thing. You're going to, we're going to put it in a company employees.
Right.
Approve by, we approved innovation process.
Right, right, precise.
Precise.
And has someone called, to Allison on our side, call someone, okay, okay.
Okay, all right, we need a motion, this. Yeah, and then we'll have to come back and, I guess, this is a simple document next year. This all three, three, three separate, we should.
Did you have separation?
Uh huh, but the agenda item only says.
I'm going to approve the document that was scheduled for additional commissioners' court meetings in the October and December of two thousand and ten.
Correct.
I have a motion in a second. Now, was this supposed to say twenty eighteen on that link? In the agenda item?
It could have.
But it doesn't. So for now, I guess we'll just cut back and redo it, okay? Okay, I have a motion in a second. I think, raise your hand.
I don't want to go.
I know, there's not anything we can do about it.
Carrie, your email is scheduled.
All right, number sixteen, interlocal agreements to consider for approval, proposed interlocal agreement with Randle County for inmate's. Just here.
They were open on the. I don't know that they're going to help us.
I was wondering, because I sound as though they were full, like.
Well, I was hoping they're full, it's just that they're very reluctant to agree to this thing because columns are.
So.
We want to have it just in case. Right now, they're not wanting to take.
What's their capacity? I was interested, one of the stipulations was that they could decide that they didn't want an inmate because of the charges or whatever they decided.
I don't know. A lot of it is based on the.
Middle? I hope we don't have to say that.
I was thought it was something else to go, but we just want to have it in place. Right now, we're still starting the, we're actually implementing, following this weekend, we would not take anybody in our job.
And it's sixty-five a day that's in this agreement. Is that the same as children's? So is it forty-five children's? And then was their commissioner's.
Open, yeah.
And their commissioners' court has approved this, or? I make a motion that we approve the proposed interlocal agreement with Randle County for inmate detention.
Motion and second, all favor, raise your hand. Who's that for? Five, zero? I want to sign this right now, Sheriff, so. Where have they got my pot name on there? All right, number seventeen, donation of drone to consider for approval of proposed dimension of banter for drones for use by the sheriff and search for rescue and other operations. Did you bring that to the force later?
Yeah. I don't know.
I hope you all know where I live.
But not operating. We have, we have the dump, and then once the dump made that deal, it's going to be, it's going to be, especially down along the perimeter and stuff, more research. Also using first, search boxes. There's actually a way to turn that into a lot of being directed a lot more out. It would be pretty nice. It's about fifteen hundred feet, it's got a three-mile radius. Those are the three batteries, which is tremendous, it's very valuable.
Where's the upgrade?
I've got a guy that's learning how to do it, and he's been playing with it. It's pretty nice to have.
Yeah.
Fourteen hundred dollars is really a pretty cheap price on that, because they're really pushing.
So Charles?
Just a picture camera, is it infrared?
You can get it infrared.
Is there any maintenance or anything, any additional expenses?
How well it's priced, it will be available to have with us. So the radius, the three-mile radius, that's basically field size. You know what happens is when the battery brings it out, it'll automatically return and return back for its original.
I make a motion to approve the donation of the drone and.
I have a motion and a second on favor, raise your hand. Five, zero. Not shift magistrate interlocal agreement to consider for approval of proposed interlocal agreement with Randle County and the city of Amarillo for provision of not shift magistrate.
Sure to go.
We've talked about this here. So we're all ready to go on this, huh?
Yep.
You've got your budget in there?
It is.
Yeah, we both did. Fifteen, okay. So, thank you, did you, did you do this?
Richard Gore actually did this, which is appreciated. The city.
And that guy, a couple of people in mind, that are volunteers to do it?
That's my understanding. And then the city, who was Robert, you know.
It's going to be a great, a great benefit for the county court law and district justice field.
It should be, it's sort of a pilot program.
What will the hours of operation be?
Five in the evening, away in the noon.
And we will both get billed, we'll split regardless of where the warrant is served.
Yes, third term.
I mentioned monthly invoices. Will we see those here in the court or monthly reports just as we get started, especially because it is a pilot? Maybe just as you get it, I think it would just be interesting to know how often we're using those services because it is a pilot, as opposed to just a voucher. Whatever you can cover here.
I expect invoices to share with exactly every call we receive.
Yeah.
Motion, please.
I make a motion that we approve the interlocal with Randle County and the city of Amarillo for provision, provision of night shift magistrates.
I have a motion and a second on favor, raise your hand. Five, zero, thank you very much. Number nineteen, nuisance abatements, discussion only to discuss options for abatements, nuisance conditions in areas of the county outside of city limits.
This is one of the things that I receive the majority of my calls, and that is my neighbors trashing this, this place, this or her place. And what can we do about it? Can you guys help us? And so it's really sad if you go out and look at some of these places, you know, it's just amazing that someone would have a piece of property and just trash it. It's just amazing to me that they have no pride. But anyway, so the process we've used in the past, and this is what we want to discuss, is this what we want to strengthen a little bit and pursue a little stronger. What I do is I report it to the sheriff's office, John, and they send out deputies to go and inspect it and take pictures and a few things, get some information. Then they write the landowner a letter asking them to all thoroughly clean this up within a certain amount of time, like thirty days, I'd rather. And the way the statute is written on the state level, then, if they don't do that within the thirty-day period, we can turn it over to our county attorney. The county attorney then takes it from there, gets an estimate of how much it's going to cost to clean it up. And he sends another, another letter sent to the, or the property owner, that you clean it up, or the county will clean it up for you and charge you either on your taxes or put a lien on your property. And right now, we haven't been very, we haven't followed through much on that. We've kind of just threatened them. But I guess it's up to the commissioners' court to take each individual complaint and decide whether we want to pursue, to have the attorney go, go after them more strongly.
If the, if the statute's, if the statute is clear, and they've been born, why would we clean up, clean it up?
Well, here's the problem. It's going to cost us money to clean it up. And if you don't, again, if you don't get them to pay, then we either own the property, then what do you do? Have to go through a sheriff's. I mean, all of this is going to cost the county money to back it up, because it sounds concerning. Concern is a question.
Well, so then, one of the things that you're correct in, in when we get the complaint, we give them thirty days. If they make any. If they make any effort whatsoever, we give them. Because of the cost, uh, John and Scott can probably touch on one and a half a year before I got here. Cost us a lot, the county a lot. County, we get it cleaned up. So, I mean, that was a, that was a huge.
They put on and on and on and on.
This was before, I can't really speak on that, but, like I said, our guys right now, I mean, they, they, they go out, they talk to them. If they'll make any effort whatsoever to try to clean that up within thirty days, we'll extend it. It's the point beyond that thirty days that we say not do anything is where, that's the sticking point because, you know, who are you going to get to clean it up? They're going to use Road and Bridge, who's extremely busy already. You're going to hire that to get somebody to clean it up? That's kind of the worst. I don't know what's happening.
I don't think there's much to add. Yep. Yes, Captain Coffee is standing in court. I think, I think they've ever really been grounds, I mean, yeah, we can go after people, but ultimately it's going to cost money, you know? There, there's a likelihood we will wind up with property we don't really want because that's the real stick is that we can place a lien against the property to recoup our expenses in, in abating the nuisance. And, you know, sometimes it'd be nice property and sometimes maybe not so much.
A lot of it, by the time you get it cleaned up and then you take the rest of the property, probably, probably losing money off of it.
Right, and there's the possibility that word gets out and there gets a little cottage industry calling, uh, reporting your neighbors trashing this place because you'd like an opportunity to buy it. And, you know, the county's going to go out and clean it up and then you get it at a discount.
We recently had, uh, some pictures of his place out in coming. He has a very nice house and a lot of property and his neighbors have trashed it, they have trashed, they have baked cars, just everything on the property. So I took it to TAD, I don't know what ever happened with it, but I don't know what his intentions of doing with the property, but no one lives in those places right now.
The sheriff got somebody out there to deal. Two of the three properties, contact has been made, the other was threatening former occupants or the scene. And so, we're going to back off here, I'm going to do this too.
What's the probate records, if there was a probate on it?
They may not be.
They were bad, cleaned up. Sorry.
More often than we.
More, more often than what, what is presented.
I think the thought was that if there's not a compliance that we have Road and Bridge per estimate, what would cost, bring that to the commissioner's court and decide what the court wants to proceed.
Also, do, do, how active do you want to be? Do you want the, the, I guess the citizens reporting this, the, the people are effective or by what's going on, do we want the sheriff's office periodically making some type of an issue of stuff? I mean, we can, this can go forever because there's a lot of, a lot of problems that you drive around.
Maybe the sheriff's office have manpower to just send somebody around looking for property?
I'm not even saying that, he's driving down the street, you see a dump, you obviously that's an issue, do we want to, do we want to go down that road or do we want to make just the? Right now, we use it to the street officers that kind of stand around this way. Any complaints go to the mayor, even in the.
It reminds me of an issue the city is having on the alleys, um, in the cleanup.
Yeah, I'm still waiting for them to clean up our street.
You might call, I have the public's work director, this is a big issue to go here. I just know that that has resurfaced again, uh, but similar issue, same here.
Since we, since we get the information, we have the information line that we answered, we get regular calls about those things and it would be helpful to us to have them transferred because they would know.
Uh, Mr. Coffee?
Sheriff's office.
Use your rich talk, Mr. Coffee, yes.
The problem, and I guess my concern is with even getting Road and Bridge to come up with the estimate. I mean, I know he gets called, she gets called, and we get called. But I would just, I hate to throw that on, on Sebastian even just for the, for the estimates because. You can probably hire a part-time job, a person for that, just that position alone, if not at a full time. There's a lot of them that we have.
Richard?
It's, it's kind of, the whole thing kind of snowballs into all of our, all of our terror group, we're working on, uh, community mitigation also for the fire service where we're doing a partnership with, uh, Amarillo Potter and Randle County where we're going out and assessing properties. And, uh, we do this quite often on the fire department, we have a lot of properties that are fire hazards to not only themselves, but their neighbors. And that's when I get with the sheriff's department guys and we try to, we try to get cooperation from them. Uh, sometimes we get bills, sometimes we get nothing. And one of the problems is trying to take county equipment on private property to clean something up, you know, we're losing money on the deal. And, uh, I was here through the last, uh, debacle we had with cleaning up the property and the county spending a lot of money on the, to lose it and the property in the process. So I'm very leery about doing that. Um, at that time, they tried to have us assist with burning the refuse and everything else on the property. For that reason, we no longer, uh, contribute to control burning at all within the county, that's completely up to the homeowner and we won't have any processing. So it kind of snowballs into the same thing with Road and Bridge, do we want to take a chance on sacrificing equipment? And what can we actually remove, what can we destroy, what needs to stay, what is the value to the homeowner? It becomes something that's almost impossible to decide how you're going to handle that. And we run into this all the time with the community wildfire protection, we're trying to, we're trying to make assessments based on an entire community when you may have ten or twelve properties within that community that, that the rest of the entire community get risked. So it's something where, where no stranger can be.
Sebastian, are you all going to have to step up? You want to, you want to, what, what is your assessment of this?
I would have no idea where to begin. I'm getting an estimate, so I pieced it, get a private contractor to do it for me and then go based off of that. I have no idea. I've never done that.
We talked about, I mean, maybe the sheriff and the attorneys and, and we've talked about this and that was one of the things we were concerned about, who, what private contractor would be really interested in this because unless we paid him upfront, really, they're not going to want to hold the bill for the lien on the property. So, uh, that's why I brought it to you because it is a big issue and it's, it's something we need to think about, we need to talk about.
Contractors would have to step up because it's easy money for them.
Yeah, I'd like to, if, if we're going to pay them, but then that's.
We don't have.
So.
Can you reach out to other counties and I'm sure this is, every county can imagine is dealing with the same thing, or a little bit of them.
I've talked to the counties about mess, but I haven't really talked about it.
The solution.
There's a voluntary, I know they have voluntary, uh, programs, I think Randle County did one time, they had some, had some people drive around traders and, and they park them and people utilize a dump that way, but. And I think that's what they did, problem is, is trying to find the people to do that and the trade they call in. They also have been, you know, actually the dump offered free day to dump your stuff in, so on that day. Of course, they're in Randle County, they're home.
It would be interesting to see what other counties are doing at the state and also to have a conversation with the city. And, I mean, I recognize it is a county issue, but it does tell us exactly as an interior city issue.
And I think, as the city moves to shut down the rush sites, I think you're going to see a lot more trash dumped in our, our niches. So we're going to have a.
And in the counties, as far as programs, I know Road and Bridge Department makes their trash choke available several times a year, homeowners associations and stuff like that. So it is a program that we go with. Uh, we've also partnered with the city trying to work on, uh, basically mitigation, uh, removing hazardous brush and stuff like that from public areas and that cuts down on the wildfire threat to homes and stuff like that. The, the problem is, like you said, you know, a lot of the avenues going away for disposal and stuff, we're going to have a lot more of it dumped in the parkages and, uh, you'd be surprised how many private properties in the county that, you know, their contractors just drive down the street and find empty lot and go dump stuff in it till they, till they get caught or, or run off. So we have a lot of that, you know, that happens too. Uh, we've talked to a lot of people that have had stuff dumped on their property that they had no idea where it came from. So all of those issues are pretty prevalent out there and it's, like I said, this is one of those deals that seems like a fairly simple solution, but there, there really isn't any. And we made, uh, trash dumpsters available at our stations, we wound up with more hazardous materials in buildings and stuff dumped in the driveways of our fire stations that one day we cannot even get our fire trucks out to put out the fire in the trash truck that had picked up all the trash that was on fire in the trash truck. So it gets pretty terrible when we start making some of that stuff accessible and that's some of the problems that we come into.
Yeah, something else to like about is, is those that can't because they're disabled, the elderly, and now they can't take them and so we're going to, how are we going to approach those? There was one house that in particular, and I think you've called and told us about it, and it had trash bags, trash bags, as tall as I am, probably ten feet away from the house all the way running. And the inside of this building was just as bad, and there was actually a person living and she was, you know, disabled. Somehow, somewhere along the line, because we went over and knocked on the door and the family came and cleaned all that up. It was, I mean, that had to take them a good for, if they, I mean, if you would knock a couple of the trash. And so, you know, if, if they've got family, they'll help them do that, that's great. If they don't, we respect that too.
Where are we going to be? If we had a place to put this trash, where would we put it? City going to take it all? That's the place.
That's the only, that's the only dump we have.
Well, the city will take it, but it's going to cost us if you're outside of the city. Unless they have. Yeah, they have a free day for county, or county resident.
So is that something you're taking, Commissioner Church, to start to ask what other counties? I don't know what you see as the next step.
It doesn't seem like it has an answer.
There won't be an easy answer, that's for sure.
It's, it's an answer to it anyway, unless, unless we want to shell out a whole bunch of money, that's, that's going to be on the county. I guess our question is, do we want to follow the statute and bring you the next, uh, step? We've kept that step from coming here at this point. And that is, do you want, the question to us would be, do we proceed?
That's kind of where, that's kind of where we've done and, and that's why we give them, if they're making any attempt whatsoever, because we have props on to Scott's office. And again, I mean, it's, and no fault in him, but they've turned that thing on because of the cost and what has happened in the past. So that's why we kind of went, okay, if you'll just make any effort whatsoever for thirty days and continue that effort, then we at least fill that ground. Because like I said, I mean, we both know that we bring that up here to y'all, I mean, we know the, the dollar amount that's not going to be cheap. And, you know, we can file them all day long, but, you know, in the end, this still gonna hit us all in the. Typically, when you do a cost like that, and they make some effort, even though it's maybe, uh, you know, but, uh, I'm going to say about seventy-five to twenty-five percent, seventy-five will, twenty-five percent. Or you run into, almost like, yeah, yeah, the, the homeowners of, of Seaton, they have twenty-one. Or, just like you're saying, we go out there and we find just an empty lot, lot and start going, then we're going to go track, find out who the owner of the property. Or run the, and like I said, I mean, I thought of this immediately when the city started talking about not doing the tip and socks, we're going to end up with so much out in the garden, it's going to be ridiculous. Because, I mean, I, I drove by that one on Broadway, checked every day and I mean, that thing, there's somebody in and out of that all the time, it's like what's going on in some cases. They're not going to, we're not going to be able to keep up with what happens as now.
So I guess, depending on the agenda.
It's just discussion.
It's just discussion anyway, but.
I can't imagine we would move forward in the next second, not knowing what to do after, if that's the part before the horse. Reminds me of when we took the vote, um, to do the maintenance on the roads out there and we're trying to figure out logistics in front of the public of how will we bill you and what will that look like? We should figure out what we're going to do, if that's your recommendation and that's what you're going to be bringing, that we vote on how we need to know what we're doing after, if, if that's our direction.
Speaking for him, but I think that's the question, what do we?
That's why, that's why I brought it here, we need to make some decisions. We're not, we can't do it today, but we want to bring it. Well, that, you know, there's a problem. All of these departments have, have the same problem. We have to, we have to answer some.
Go to work on Western, you go out there, build, uh, build paintball places, maybe just abandon it. And I mean, it's just, and you got a real nice house next door, but nobody's ever called and complained about it. Yeah, tell me hello. But, you know, I mean, it's amazing what you, the house that plays next door to that trash. There again, you go back to what he's saying, where you've got fire danger, plus you've got permits that are, I'm not telling them what's living.
So what did, what did, if we do the. I can check with them. See what they're doing.
Can you guys have something to add?
I just had a question, when you, when you serve a cleanup notice, is there any mechanism where we check the status of property taxes? If there's delinquent property taxes, it would get pretty aggressive. Those developers, you're saying they were maybe getting the property in the hands of somebody to clean it up without cleaning it up?
That should be the first thing we do is check.
I mean, if we get a complaint, we just go out and try to find the whoever's left their own property and that's where we go with that.
Well, if, uh, we can coordinate, we could, we could check the status of property taxes and get them linked.
The predators, they aren't delinquent, don't they have a red check limit or something?
Yeah, I don't know how, I don't know how long we typically let those go.
I think it's three years, if you don't pay for three years, they don't, does that let them escape for years?
And I don't know that's out procedure if that's the law. That's not my main mechanism, we get the property in their hands of somebody else.
All right, so let's, let's bring this back to. Number twenty, procedure and policy implementation, you consider next on implementing procedure or policy requiring any sort of change beyond what was presented during the process to come to court, commissioner's court for the. This is something that has, um, has been on my mind for a long, long time, I'm going to work for judge where, and I'm, this is, I'm not going to point fingers, I'm not going to say a word, I'm just going to ask that we implement a procedure or something where, um, department head or licensed official cannot take unused funds and give them to certain people in their office without them in court first.
Right, which, this is in my, in our budget this year, so.
Is it just sorry? Question, we're not taking money from the general operation of their office.
It's only selling, it's only selling.
Just sorry.
Yeah, and I have a proposed, uh, procedure, I can read it if you would like to hear it. I mean, send your, yeah, send your package, procedure that, you know, to us.
So we, we, we're in the legal, uh, window of, uh, of, of, be able to do that?
Do what?
We could, we're a state of choice legally, uh, court. Directly, that, that procedure that is stated.
So Scott, I think that's.
Can we legally do this?
Well, uh, as a general matter, um, things tend to be set in a fair group of budgets adopted. When you adopt a budget, that's how it's gonna be the rest of the year. Um, and, um, so if, if you adopt the budget with line item identification salaries, then that's in class, you said. You adopt a line, line item by line item budget, and Scott, our salary is X, tab dollars is Y, uh, you know, weight distribution salary is Z. Uh, that's implicit in that, uh, that, that you have to report to amend those by weight of budget transfer. Uh, when you have a lump sum assigned to each department, the AG opinions tend to, tend to suggest that by doing so, you can place those funds in the discretion of the local official or department head to run their department. Uh, that is, if you don't break it out, line items by line employee by employee.
And knowing that, 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 that the directive for, uh, salaries is already defined in the budget schedule.
Get this later.
Get it out of my mind, yes.
Which ours is this year, the line item is in our budget, we wrote that out.
Just a schedule.
Schedule.
That, if that schedule is adopted into the budget, then you've done that.
And so it, and it was?
Well, it was part of the one percent, the, oh, actually, it, it happens today, has the one percent added to the original. Well, on the proposed, that includes the one percent, and that's what we're working towards, actually being formalized and adopted for the budget. So the, the twenty seventeen eighteen budget will have this, with the one percent.
That was, I think y'all adopted the twenty seventeen eighteen budget. At this point, they'll end up doing a separate tax.
Excellent.
You know, we're she put this schedule or this actual schedule is not presented with the budget.
And I think that's key. I think the schedule needs to be with the budget in order for it to, for you to really have this policy. And you're saying that's not in the, that schedule's not in the budget, the formal budget?
Well, the updated one.
But you did it past one, if I'm understanding, Carrie, right? The schedule, the original schedule was part of the budget.
It was part of the budget, worksheets that they, that were.
But not in the proposed, not on the actual file. Sorry, that's key, because I'm, I'm thinking back to some old documentation that you sent Scott, and I'm, I'm remembering that that schedule is key to being in the actual filed budget in order to implement this policy.
Right, right. Again, the commissioner's court, the, the law is fairly clear, the commissioner's court has pre-plenary discretion to decide how specific they choose to adopt the budget. Whether it's by general lump sum line item, line items, or by specific item, by item, position by position, uh, line items. And of course, the way the AG opinions to date have come out, there's not, there's, there's not a lot of case law on this, it's almost all AG opinions. There have been some cases that have discussed it, but they were, they don't really address the question that's in front of you then. Uh, so what's in front of you today is, and it gets the budget as adopted, specific enough, line item by line item. If, if that's the case, you really have already adopted this policy. Uh, if that, if it's not the case, um, there might be really a challenge. That's, that's what I.
So would it be appropriate as a next step, Scott, to have you work with our auditor to confirm that indeed it does satisfy that requirement?
Obviously, I'm, I'm happy to work with the auditor.
What does that?
Yeah, I, I, I will say from my, from my position, please, can you take off my lawyer hat for a minute, my department head hat? From my position, I just wanna know if it's, if it's line item by line item, right, okay, well, just so I know. Now, I'm putting the lawyer hat back on and, and I will tell you, uh, yeah, I'll work with Carrie. I, I will admit, I'll concede to you right now, I have a budget well to tell you whether effectively you adopted line item by line item, uh, position by position budget. If you have, you're free to adopt this policy, but it's part of this purpose, because if you've adopted a line item by line item budget, that's implicit. The idea is the commissioner's court can delegate, at least in our county, can delegate the ability to approve of the transfers. Uh, there is in, in counties that adopt subchapter C, chapter one eleven, we operate under subchapter A. If you adopt subchapter C, you have a separate budget officer, right now you're the budget officer. Uh, if you adopt a separate budget officer, it's usually with a regular bar, that's that. Then that, that, under subchapter C, that budget officer has some discretion by line item transfers, including with respect to salaries. Such as is granted by the commissioner's court. But under subchapter A, if you've got a line item by line item budget, then only the commissioner's court can approve transfers between line items.
So would you agree at first step before we adopt the standard operating procedure, that's what this reminds me of, it's just like an SOP. But before we adopt this, we need to confirm that our budget.
For this year, now you would be, I can tell you regardless of what, what happens with the budget this year, you are free to adopt that policy as a matter of perspective. Going forward, we are going to do budget line, every position will be its own line item in the budget. Uh, and if that, and again, I'll work with Carrie to try to figure out, is that the way we've done it in this budget? So.
My question is, right now, we can move things as long as it's in the same group, the same thing. We don't have to come back to court for everything that we did in change and stuff. It's in the same number of area, that's the best way I can phrase it. And I think that was done on purpose and not having, having.
As it, as it was.
Coming in, enchanted, did y'all have any proof or, or?
Today, what Randall's talking about that they can do is they can move in their budget for general expenses, right? So if something's in the salary bucket that needs to be here, as long as it's in, or I'm sorry, the stationary and supplies bucket.
Well, like I, I ran out of education and training funds.
Right.
This time.
But I was speaking so, I had to come forth.
I'm, I'm speaking to only salaries.
Right. Uh, there, there's, the, the framework that my mind is operating is sort of illustrated in a case called Bridge versus Park out of Williamson County. In that case, the, uh, constable sued the commissioner's court because the commissioner's court had withdrawn, uh, salary from the constable's salary line item and put it into sheriff's department because they took away the middle point, uh, operation from the constable, gave it to the sheriff. Uh, and what the constable sued saying was, hey, 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 uh, you can't amend my budget, uh, without, uh, a, without emergency. The, the idea, you can amend the budget and create a new line item if there's an emergency. Uh, and what the, looking at it in Williamson County, what the court had not done was, um, was to adopt a position by position schedule. The auditor maintained a schedule like that, so the auditor knew foods, like what. But the court had adopted a budget that simply assigned a lump sum to each department for salaries. And what the, what the court in that case said, no, no, they just, it's not, you're my authority to report here. Court said, yes, the court can transfer amounts between the department's salary lines. Court can do that. Court has plenary discretion. What the court did make clear is that the court has more, uh, exacting authority to review, uh, budget transfers between salaries if this, the budget is adopted position by position, each position is its own line item. Where, what, what the problem was in, in the Williamson County case was all of the salaries were one opt, one line. In, in, for, for department. Uh, and historically, that's what we've done, yeah. Um, so again, uh, I, I wish I could stand here definitively to you, but I had not reviewed the budget closely enough to see if the structure of the budget is such as we adopted position by position line items or rather lump sum salary assignment.
I know it certainly was not in the motion to approve the budget that it was line item, but I, but I was under the assumption that it was, because that's how our, our budget proposal book came to us. Um, but if we need to have more clarity, I guess we need to, I'm sorry. I mean, that was just what I assumed.
Would it be appropriate for Scott and Carrie to maybe meet on this and let us know next board or if there's anything you need to do to, um, work towards getting our budget to follow the line in just current direction?
Sure. One other possibility I would mention, because, uh, it's our, my job as a lawyer to make sure we're prized in your alternatives. Uh, if in fact the budget is not adopted as a position by position line item budget, uh, you could create those line items by way of finding if you could, if court believes it is an emergency. You would have been amending the budget by inserting those line items, even though it wouldn't change the overall budget amount, but it would insert those line items. Or if we look back, I can look back at the structure, and the structure of it may be, with common understanding of court, that in fact by attachment of that, of those worksheets that show position by position, that that's what you did.
But Scott, what would constitute an emergency?
A unforeseen circumstance that could not have been foreseen in exercise of reasonable diligence.
Long you've been working.
You asked a lot.
Do you need to catch, if this is the exact criteria?
That, that determination of whether an emergency within that framework exists is, uh, to the commissioner's court. You're the fact finding body of the returns.
If you do, if you do that, or the bad lines or salary line, what, what's the rules? What's the rules again?
Okay, um, we want to pass this check until we know.
I think that's suggested on page that, that, uh, that Scott given to, to Carrie and get a definitive information to us by, uh, in court. Cause I think we all, we all believe it's a court, I don't lie, we imply that it wasn't by line item.
About that, we're talking about this issue, but it's not.
We have a schedule.
Well, no, I, our department has one, I, I assume every department has the same thing, where part of that schedule is in fact broken down, my, my line, my salary, dad's salary, Wayne's salary, right down to our part-time employees.
Okay, so, um, I wanna be, I wanna be in that.
Absolutely.
I support that. Thanks, Scott. I don't hear anything there, I just complain.
What's the line, uh, what's the sentence meaning, the funds must be, funds for increase must be payable in six, sixty nine, four hundred. Salary asset base of line item must be returned, not from, and spent funds from previous payers. What's that?
You can't have the salary budget at twenty-four thousand late six months. Pay twenty-four thousand over six months of that budget. You can't not spend those same.
In other words, you, the annual, annualize it to be forty-eight thousand. If you, if you waited six months and paid it the full twenty-four thousand, I'd do, oh, Daniel, minus that, be forty-eight.
Okay, number twenty-one, what happens to consider next on the public, one of our, A, questions, number one, nine. Deborah Soria as part-time deputy is requested to general public, taken office twenty-four, twenty seventeen. And somebody's made next to law, to come and Darla Johnson's, who's studying one, to get the passing way of that to office twenty-bash, twenty seventeen. Resignation of Cecil Edels as late technician four, effective sixteen or six.
Oh, no, 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 is that resignation or retirement?
I asked you clearly, if it was retirement, you told me you wouldn't talk to me, I, I needed to know that he goes off HR. All I know is, is retirement, that's what I know, but he went on the form, resignation.
Yeah, and that's what legal are.
Yeah.
Because I think his understanding, I said it because I spoke with him, particularly, that he's on the impression that he's retired, he is, so I don't know if that's.
Well, strictly speaking, even a retirement is a resignation.
Yeah.
Um, so I think if HR is willing, it has the documentation showing it's a retirement, you can recognize it as such with your motion.
But my only hesitation is if he indeed is retiring and we have to mark this resigning, if that affects any retirement benefits.
No.
Your question is.
Of course, it is not, not generally resigned or retired. Okay, they broke a bridge that this starts with David, which we know is nineteen, two thousand, twenty-nine, twenty seventeen.
I would, we approve the employment items as presented.
Second, for a quick discussion, um, Judge, and I, this is not my peruse of Commissioner Vaughn, I, I know there's one employment item that, if there is still questions on, I think this is the Cecil employment, I suppose, right, I, I mean, I know we talked about the type of resignation, but is this?
I think from what I heard, correctly due, that we can, the word resignation and retirement code is basically all the same as, but then, but but by having the employee indicate and state, and I know he stated to me that he was resigned. So I don't know if that's an indicator that, and Scott, what you're saying, if you change those, that works.
I think, I think for purposes, at this point, you aren't passing on this entitlement to retirement benefits, that's entirely up to TCD RS. Uh, you're just recognizing, uh, or approving because it's one of the departments, I need to correct, so you're approving the fact that he has resigned. And he has resigned, whether he chooses to, to claim his retirement funds and his benefits, he's, he's apparently already doing that, so.
Okay, okay, I want to motion, second time favoring. Do you have anything more projects?
Briefly, the radio suite on the long enforcement center, we are shooting for November twenty-nine to occupy the, uh, vehicle maintenance garage. The long enforcement center, we had a revision to their, they did this now, January seventeenth, we had it one day due to, due to weather. Uh, currently this week, we'll be planning to occupy the building, we'll be going through, getting a plan together, uh, to create a schedule. The, uh, Oak Court's flat project, they didn't even record anything where we stand on that, cause the work is completed, I know where the answers are.
Yeah, we just have one final invoice for Black and Green that we're reviewing, and so you should see that hopefully on the next.
The, uh, Oak Court's mill work, uh, we still like to support some of these ops, uh, leaving it. One thing I want to make aware of, uh, baseball stadium. This week I'll have our staff out there, they'll be going through shutting down the water to the baseball stadium that the master water, uh, that we typically do this time every year. We will be locking out thousands of water, uh, here, um, October the first, we'll be going through, and I'll be shutting down the leak into the stadium and locking out the irrigation as well. Um, October one, the utility bill will back to the name, you might have a contract with the stadium, we've had that happen before, so. Right now, they've been working it done out there without my approval or anything like that, something's made, you were, I told people doing work to stop it, because there's no con, no other subsidies on that stadium, so.
Well, we have a clarification, Matt, for the people we're talking about, uh, the ones who were, uh, they've been, I'm sure, approved it, it's just.
It seems, they're doing work to approve it, but there's no subsidies on.
the same, they're doing work to approve it, but there's no suddenly, it's on, it's like going out on a run, you do the work, it's just, I wish they would notify us.
We do have a meeting discussion with them.
So if, if you have a meeting, you get a contract established, let me know, those utilities, as far as they're going in their name, or is that, you're coming in our?
And as a side note, and I know this isn't an agenda item, so to keep me in my lane here, but, um, we have been working with Mr. Ellison to get his final improvements and receipts, because that is slated to end September thirtieth, is when that contract ends, so we know this time every year, there's always a process to get the receipts, and, but we're expecting that, at least an update to the next court of, A, we have them, or B, we don't, and, uh, appropriate action.
That's what the compensation was heading to.
Would that be, we have to pretty soon work this, take the logs off too.
Pretty soon. Thanks, Vaughn. Okay, so you're for, um, five hundred and ninety-eight people in jail, and one bed available, has somebody?
Sleep room.
Yeah, eighty-three females and ten additional females and childrens, and it's eighty-eight percent felony rate, six percent misdemeanor. Have any insurance items?
Yeah.
Uh, executive session, we're not having that today, just items for next time.
Yeah, I Bushland Road. They're asking, after our last discussion, we kind of throw it back into, um, Bushland I S D's hands, and, um, they're asking, well, if we go to all this expense of getting some kind of an estimate, what's it gonna cost? What's the chance of you, of you, the court, uh, approving the project, we don't want to waste that money, it's just, not gonna be approved, and so I think we need to talk a little bit about that.
Okay, as you see, there was an addendum to the agenda, because I dropped it all and forgot to put it somewhere. So today is the, uh, the second public meeting on proposed tax rate. So is there anyone here that needs to speak to that? Anyone here who needs to speak to the tax rate, proposed tax rate? Okay, if there's no one here, that's good. So, does anything else? Nothing else?